First call tonight's meeting ordered, let's have their roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Rarden.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Benner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
First thing we'll have, the indication by Pastor Kirkinson of the Hazeville Christian Church.
Heavenly Father, we get it before you tonight, and I'm reminded of the words of Jesus. Not my will be done, but Thy will be done. It challenges to seek first your kingdom and your righteousness, but there's a promise that then everything else will be added unto us. I thank you for that promise if we lay aside our own agendas and seek your kingdom, your righteousness, that you are able to do exceedingly abundantly, abominably beyond all we could ever ask or think. So, Lord, help us to do your will in our personal lives, in the city, in this community. And we know it's your will that we pray. So, I thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and to join with this council. And just lifting up a prayer for our children and our young people, the ones that seem to be the most impacted by all the stuff going on in the world right now. Those that don't know from one day to the next if they're going to be sick, or exposed, or quarantined, or missing a game, or competitive event for which they've worked and trained so hard. There's so much uncertainty surrounding their young lives. I pray for their parents, their caregivers, their guardians. I pray for this community where there seems to be so much division around us. We pray right here in our lives, in our homes, in our families, in this council, in this community, that we come together. I thank you even tonight, as I sat here listening to the laughter, the joy that fills this room, and I pray that we can be that for our young people, not discouragements, but those who continue to see hope. I ask this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation of approval minutes, minutes of September 13, 2021. Mr. Benner.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of September 13, 2021. Business meeting.
Second.
I'll second to approve the minutes, September 13, 2021. Any discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
abstain.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
abstain.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
I want citizens to be heard. We have none that have signed up for the agenda. Item two, approval on license and bonds. A, we have the consideration of the refuse holder license renewal for waste management. Pardon.
I make a motion, we approve the 2021 refuse holder license renewal for waste management.
Second.
I'll second to approve the renewal for waste management. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Item three is introduction ordinance and resolutions. A, an ordinance suspending the water infrastructure fee of $7 per month from October 21 through February 22 as provided in Article 17, Section 391A. Got the memo from Will. Kind of adding to that, we have the ARPA funds that we are able to do the additional water lines that we're not able to do without the $7 a month. Since we're able to do those, and since we can actually use ARP funds to give back to the people, this allows us to truly go ahead and give back to our citizens some of the money that is being taken away from them to give to us. So, that's why I think we ought to at least rebate some of this money back to our residents out there, to give them some money back. The money will go on the $7 a month until it reaches the amount of the monthly, $7 per month will not be there any longer. One reason we're only doing the 152 is because later on, you'll see where Tony's going to present how to pay for the water meters. We will need the additional cash flow down the line to pay for these water meters, but this sure allows us to go ahead and give some money back to our residents out there. Oh, Pat, I'll open it up for discussion. Ms. Crum.
I really have a discussion. I think it's a great idea. If there is no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance suspending the water infrastructure fee of $7 per month from October 2021 through February 2022 as provided in Article 17, Section 391A.
Second.
I'll stand second to suspend the ordinance on the monthly water fee as presented. Other discussion anywhere? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
We'll go on then to notice communications, governing body. Ms. Crum.
Library wants to make sure everybody knows that coming up on Wednesday, September 29th, no, excuse me, at 8:00 AM Wednesday, and then until 5:00 PM on Thursday, the 30th, Kansas Works will be holding a virtual statewide job fair. You can find, you actually have to get on and register for times, and that is at kansasworks.com. And that's a job fair on there again, begins at 8:00 AM on September 29th and ends at 5:00 PM on Thursday, the 30th. The library right now is seeking two part-time staff members, page or circulation librarian, depending on qualifications and experience. If you would like a written description of the job duties and requirements, they would like you to please visit the library and you can pick those up. Every Tuesday morning at the library, you can join Ms. Stephanie from Parents as Teachers for reading, crafts, songs, and fun at 10 and 11 o'clock. There is a link provided, you have to sign up ahead of time, and there's a new link provided every Wednesday on the library's webpage. So, you can just go onto the webpage and there's the same on there, like click link, and you can click and get signed up for that. And on Saturday, October 9th, the genealogy group will be having an open house in the basement of the library from 2:00 to 4:00. If you have any questions about that, you can call the library. The number of the library is 524-5242. That's all I have.
Any other announcements before I do senior center? If not, on Wednesday, the 29th, they have the hustle trip to Escare and Blaine's Candy. Tuesday, Thursday, September 30th, no meals on wheels, friendship meals, and a pizza party at 11:30. Friday, October 1st, they have a drumming class at 10:00. Monday, October 4th, panning commissioning at 12:30. Tuesday, October 5th, they have a multi-senior pool tournament that begins at 1:00. And then Wednesday, October 6th, they have bingo at 12:30. Hazel Hustle's had 156 tries over the last two weeks, and 27 of these was for their PA trip on 9/24. 17 new registrations last two weeks, and nine of these was for the PAT trip on 9/24. We'll then move on to item B is new business. We've had several. One of us, Go Brand or Go Puffs. This is a business that is going in right next to Mario's Pizza. I don't know if you saw the information in the Wichita Eagle. We are one of their three locations that I guess they're opening up to them in Wichita. So, it'd be nice to have that one in town. Capital Auto Sales is opening, and then Hiro Sushi and Kibachi. This is going into where the other restaurant was and went out. So, we'll have a different type of restaurant in town. And then Mary Kay, which is a home business. Other five, we have no other business, old business. Item six, we have other business. A, consideration approval of the water meter project and water project schedule. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the June 14th council meeting, you presented a memo on recommended uses of ARPA funds. This presentation will outline the project's schedule along with consideration of bids on the water meter project. Next slide, please. Projects include wire waterline improvements, corrosion control, Hungerford waterline design improvements, and water meters. Next slide. The first half of ARPA funding has been deposited. That amount was $860,000. This spreadsheet details the project estimates, timing, and the money available. We expect the final ARPA funding to be deposited in July of 2022. Next slide. Wire waterline is approximately 3,400 linear feet of water main construction. It'll include new fire hydrants, service lines, and valves. The project will be directionally drilled, and then we expect to have a fall 2021 bid letting in construction. Final plans have been delivered to KDHE for their final approvals this week. Next slide. Corrosion control. In 2020, we were notified by KDHE that a corrosion control study and installation of corrosion controlled treatment is required. The corrosion control study was approved by council September 28th of 2020. It is required due to past copper action level exigencies. The study recommends treatment with an orthophosphate. Right now, PEC is determining the chemical with the vendor in KDHE. We expect to have a design agreement to you guys in fall of 2021, and the project has an estimated cost of $200,000. The treatment is required to be operational by August of 2022. Next slide. Hungerford waterline improvements. Design agreement was approved by city council on July 12th of this year. So far, PEC has completed the survey. Design is underway with an expected alignment to city staff in a few weeks. We expect the bid letting in construction to be in the summer of 2022, and that project is estimated to be just under $530,000. Next slide. Water meter improvements. So, water meters are the cash register for the water and wastewater utility. Our current radio read system was installed in 2012. We have faced many challenges with that current system. You may not know, but the city has approximately 4,584 water meters. Technology has improved vastly since that project in 2012. Also, customer demand has changed. They want more control, they want more data at their fingertips. So, let's talk about the technology available. Advanced meter reading, or AMR, is a radio read system. It is less expensive, but offers less benefits and features. It is our current system. It is a drive-by system that requires us to roll a truck out to everybody's house to read their water meter. Also, the readings are only gathered once a month and staff are reading. Next slide. Advanced metering infrastructure, AMI, allows us to obtain readings in real time. Every water meter sends reading every four hours with hourly readings for each hour. It helps us identify leaks with built-in usage alarms that are available to our operators, which enable us to have a real-time, quick response to high usage. Like our current system, we only know what residents use on a monthly basis. With the new AMI system, we'll know every hour what usage people are using. It utilizes a wireless technology to collect and transmit water usage. Residents are also provided with an online portal, which enables them to view their water usage and also participate in their own water management. Hourly readings would be available to city clerk and water department staff to assist in billing inquiries. Right now, a lot of billing inquiries we have at city clerk's office, we're actually rolling a truck to discuss it with them on site. With the new system, I think city clerk's office would have access, and I think they will have access to hourly readings, and will be able to discuss it here at city hall. We'll also be able to read meters with the touch of a button. We also would have a dashboard to status to monitor all the meters and alarms. The AMI system may allow us to bill in the same month instead of two months behind. For example, currently, water you're using right now in September is red in October, and it's billed in November. Next slide. Background, we have a master meter, AMR system, which was purchased in 2012. It was installed by public work staff. It took well over one year for all public work staff to play their part and get those installed. The system was designed to allow staff to drive by to read meters utilizing a laptop. Ability to retrieve data logs from meters to assist residents with billing inquiries. Data logs or inquiring with that meter pulling water usage, whether it be daily or hourly readings from it. With our current system, it must be done with a truck and the reading software next to the meter. Right now, currently, we're only experiencing about a 50% success rate when we try to query the meter for a data log. Next slide. Ongoing issues with our current system, poor signal. Either the computer reading system fails to get the signal from the meter, or the meter fails to send the signal out. The signal in our current system operates on an open frequency, which that means it's competing with everyday electronics that we have in our house. Manual reading of meters. If we are unable to read a meter electronically, we must read the meter manually, which leads to the next bullet point, which causes it to be very labor-intensive. Issues receiving data logs, we spoke about that in the last slide. We've reached out to the vendor of our current meter and asked them how do we alleviate these issues on us, and they've told us to replace the register in the meters. Basically, that entails basically almost changing out a meter, just the top of it. We've done that numerous times, and still, and unacceptable quantities still result in the meter not reading electronically. One of the computer reading receivers that's failed and been replaced. The two current ones show signs of age. They will need to be replaced soon, and each of those individually is $15,000. Also, Angie will agree with this, each time your register is replaced, our operator staff has to write down the identification number, give it to the clerk's department, and then they have to enter it into the billing software. Goes back to that bullet point of being very labor-intensive. Currently, it is taking four employees approximately seven to 10 days to read meters. Reminds you, the radio read system is supposed to tell you driving 20 to 35 miles an hour down the road and picking up the readings. That breaks down to approximately 224 to 320 staff hours each month to read meters. We have changed out approximately 2,000 registers and currently have at least 700 more that require changing. And we're not gaining ground. We may install 200 this month, well, then we get another 250 that fail. We also have long lead times on the registers from vendors, and the warranty expires at the end of this year. Next slide. So, system requirements and the request for proposals. We desire a two-way fixed AMI communication network. What that means is we want to be able to talk to the meter when we want to talk to it, and we want that meter always talking to us. Communications to the meter is to use an RF-based private license frequency. I'll say that one more time. Private license frequency. There will be a FCC license to us, the city of Hazeville, for these water meters. We will not be competing with any other electronics. Communication system shall support real-time, on-demand water meter reading. We want a dashboard that reports and manages the water system that will help identify leaks on the customer side of the meter. If one of you guys have a leak on your customer side of the meter right now, we don't know unless we visually see it, or if we read the meter, and we know you have 100,000 gallons of usage. An AMI system will actually alarm that meter and tell us, Councilman Kreb used 20,000 gallons of water in two hours. We can roll a truck very quickly out there and say, Councilman Kreb, you got a problem.
Just Danes in town.
It also utilizes wireless technology to collect and transmit the water usage. And again, residents will have access to an online portal. Bids. All these bids include installation. I want to call out specifically, the Midwest meter and the Schulte Supply bids did not meet the specifications. The Midwest meter bids and Schulte Supplies additional bid option on the right were actually cellular networks. The best bid was from Corin Maine with an AMI census FlexNet system. We met with City of Derby several months ago. They have an AMI census FlexNet system, and they demonstrated how that system operates. Their staff communicated to us they had little to no problems at all, and the things they were able to do were quite amazing. Warranty. The meters, the battery, and the system components have a 20-year warranty. In the RFP, we called out for installation to be completed within 180 days once meters are on hand. We also called out for a battery backup at the base station. The base station is what receives all their readings. It'll be at the water tower with an antenna on top of it. Go to the next slide, please. The staff recommendation is to approve the bid from Corin Maine for $1,697,700. We evaluated the cash flow in the utilities fund, and pleased to report, we do not need to borrow any money to pay for this project. The project will be paid with remaining ARPA funding and cash flow from the Water and Wastewater Fund. Also seeking a motion to approve the water project schedule as presented in the beginning of the slide. If I didn't answer any questions, I stand for those.
Ms. Crum?
I got a few, actually. The AMI, so that bid, that's for everything, because like, do we have to pay for the license from the FCC? That's okay, so we don't have to pay for that, but that covers all the software and everything that's needed for all of that.
Yeah, there's about yearly software fees of about $37,000 with it, but that's 1.697, includes the first five years.
Okay, and you said Derby uses it?
Yes.
Is there anybody else locally that uses it? Do you know how long the system's been up and going, how long it's been?
Derby, I think it was 2015 or 2016, if I'm not mistaken. They're able to calculate their water usage daily and what they pump or receive from City of Wichita, and then compare that to what they're actually billing daily and see how much water loss they have. You may remember a few years ago, Derby had a big water main break in a creek or a river, and lost a bunch of water. This system, if they had that at the time, would enable them to catch that sooner.
Okay, that's more interesting. I want to make sure it's been around long enough that all the bugs could have been worked out of it. You talked about how you could actually start getting readings monthly. If we tried to start doing that, how would we, are we making a plan to how we would adjust that because we're two months behind, so we can't just start doing that?
Right, I mean, first off, this is a huge project, it's a big project. One of the big variables we're taking out of the installation won't be done by us. That was very time-consuming, let alone the other issues that come up in the water department. Angie and I talked briefly. That's a goal that we would like to get to, is to be able to bill in the same month that you use the water. How to get there, we're not sure yet. We want to make sure everybody knows how to operate the system, and then work out any kinks that there may be, because there will be kinks, so this is kind of something like this works.
Okay, and then there was one, I don't remember if I wrote it down right, the corrosion part that was early on. So, is that supposed to be completed by August 2022?
Correct.
We're not even done with the study yet, right?
We're done with the study. They presented a chemical brand to KDHE. KDHE did not like that chemical, so they were going back to the chemical vendor in KDHE to specifically call out which chemical to use. When we're talking about the corrosion control, it's literally like a 15-by-8-foot building with just a couple pieces of equipment. There should not be a ton of design needed for it. They should be able to move through pretty quickly.
Okay, so you're not concerned about that deadline?
Not yet. We meet about once a week or every two weeks bi-weekly with PEC, and we talk about that project. I'm sure with COVID and everything else going on, KDHE may allow for some changing of schedule if needed, but we're not to that point of worrying about it yet, no.
Okay, I think that might have been asked. If it was, thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Tony, I was also wondering, you got that corrosion study, you said that they were not interested, they did not like the idea of the orthophosphate, is that what you're saying, that they were looking at another chemical to put in the water?
It's the orthophosphate that was called out in the study. They called out for a specific brand of chemical to KDHE, and KDHE did not like that chemical. So, they've basically said to PEC, go back to your onboard and find a different orthophosphate. The orthophosphate, what it does, it actually lines piping material in your house or water main. So, basically, if there's any issues with any pipe corrosion in your house, it doesn't allow it to leach into the water. So, basically puts a protective coating on the main or the service line or your plumbing stuff.
So, it doesn't affect the drinking water itself?
Correct.
Well, it happens that you have a higher level than the nitrates of copper in there. What are the ramifications, the side effects of that?
So, what happened was, and before the study was done, we were required to do 30 lead and copper samples. Lead and copper, lead was well below the maximum contaminant level. That's what KDHE calls out for chemicals. Copper is 1.3 milligrams per liter as a maximum contaminant level. They take your 30 samples and they calculate a 90th percentile. When they calculated ours, ours was 1.59, just over the 1.3 allowed. So, that's what triggered the corrosion control. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I hope so.
I was just wondering about possible side effects of that difference.
I don't have them in front of me, I would hate to.
Other questions for Tony? So, what he's asking for then is to approve the bid of Corin Maine for $1,697,700, and then the overall program presenting for the water line corrosion control and Hungerford, and then the water meters. Mr. or Ms. Pardon?
Doing both at the same time or separate?
He did them all once, that's what we got on here in water project schedule.
All right. I make a motion, we approve the bid for Corin Maine for $1,697,700, and also the plan for all the presented water projects.
Second. I'll second to approve the bid of Corin Maine for $1,697,700, plus the schedule for the water projects. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Item B is consideration approval of PEC for materials testing.
Good evening again. PEC is performing the materials testing and stormwater inspection for the North Maine paving project. PEC originally submitted their proposal and contract to KDOT in January. KDOT informed PEC this month that invoices need to be submitted to the city, and will be reimbursed at 80%. I am seeking approval to accept the agreement to perform all material testing and stormwater inspection with PEC Field Services, not to exceed $81,553.15. And since the project's done, I stand for any questions.
Questions, anyone? Motion? Ms. Crum?
Is the $81,000, are 20%, or is that going to be sent, and then we'll get?
Correct.
We'll get a refund of 80%.
Yeah, okay. And basically what happened, PEC submitted an invoice to KDOT. KDOT said, wait, we don't pay that, the city's supposed to pay that, and then that's the one we're here now.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with PEC for the North Main Street testing agreement as presented.
Second. I'll second to approve the PEC materials testing agreement. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Item C is a consideration temporary special event permit for the Fall Festival Beer Garden.
I'm here to ask for permission to do the beer garden at the Fall Festival this next month.
Ms. Kessler?
I think motion, we approve the special event permit application for the Fall Festival Beer Garden as presented.
I'll second to approve the temporary special permit as presented for the Festival Beer Garden. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Abstain.
Crum.
Yes.
Item D is consideration temporary special event permit for paint the night at the hack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On October 23rd, Hazeville Recreation is offering a paint the night where people can come in and paint or do a fall craft of their choice. So, it'll be a two-hour event in which people can drink wine or beer as they do their paint lettuces class. We are requesting that people over the age of 21 can bring beer or wine and drink as they create their craft. IDs will be checked at the door. I stand for any questions.
Ms. Pardon?
I make a motion, we accept the permit for the paint the night.
Second. I'll second to approve the special permit for paint the night at the hack. Other discussion anywhere? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Then move on to inform reports. Will was not able to, I don't think he left the tank doors. City clerk, answer?
Good evening. I just wanted to announce that on October 11th, city offices will be closed. That would be the next council meeting, so it's going to be moved to October 12th, on Tuesday.
Yeah, we will be here on my birthday.
Chief?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let you know that we had our car seat check lane last Saturday. Put approximately 22 cars through that check lane, so had several car seats came through that we looked at, made sure they were all installed properly, and everybody was safe with their kids in there. Also, our visiting officer this evening is Officer Jessica Starnes. She's currently a school resource officer assigned to Hazville High School. So let's say hi to hers, you go by out there. Thanks.
Tony?
At the last council meeting, I was asked to provide data on the construction debris usage at Public Works. To date, since July 1, we have had 123 people utilize that service, and we've incurred $2,500 in tipping fees. If you remember right, we approved $30,000 for that this calendar budget year. And also, our phone lines are currently down at Public Works. You can reach us at 529-5945. We're hoping to have those back and running on Wednesday, hopefully. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hazville Slash Pad will be closing on September 30th. We are currently taking registrations for Walktober, which is a mileage challenge. We still have time to get your team of four in for that for the month of October, and then we're currently taking registration for the Gobble Wobble 5K on November 6th.
Very good, thank you. Item A, appointments. A, Alan Packer to the library board, seat two, for the remaining term. Mr. Kreb?
I'll make a motion that we allow the appointment of Alan Packer to the library board, seat two, for the remainder of that term.
Second. Well, second to approve the appointment of Alan Packer. The discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item nine, off-gender citizens to be heard, anything, anywhere? No? Item 10, executive station, we have none. Item 11, bills be paid for second half of September.
I would like to make a motion that we pay the second half of September bills.
Second. Well, second to pay the second half of September bills? Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
12, consent agenda, have nothing. Item 13, council concern, A. Mr. Kreb?
First off, I want to thank Chief for some work over at the crosswalk. The beginning of the year, we were at the crosswalk by Nelson, it's really gone pretty well, and then a week ago, last Thursday and Friday, I had four people run a red light on Thursday morning, three more ran the red light on Thursday after school, and three more ran the light Friday morning. And I let Chief know, and he's had some, and every day, there's been an officer out there this past week, I think they pulled over at least one person. I just need people to please put down your phones, or just pay attention and look at that light. You've got flashing lights telling you to slow down as you get to the crosswalk, the school zone anyway. I do my very best to try to find gaps in the, in the traffic before I hit it. So if you see that light being red or being yellow, it's about to turn red because I gave you time to stop. And twice last week, I was, I was already in the road, the kids weren't in the road yet, and somebody would be going, and it's not the sun, because I've got just as many running that are going west as are going east. So it's just people not paying attention, or people trying to hurry through it because they're in a hurry. And some people here may not know it, but about eight years ago, we had a student that got hit out there, because as soon as that light changed, there wasn't a crossing guard out there then, as soon as that light changed and that walk light came on, he stepped out into traffic. And the truck didn't stop. Guys, whatever you're looking at on your phone or paying attention to, it's not as important as the life of a kid crossing the street. So I just ask everybody, please, that, look, both school zones in town are not that long. If you slow down from 35 to 20 for the distance of those, it's gonna cost you 45 seconds. And if that light turns yellow, please just stop, let, let the kids cross, and then go. Just, please be careful out there. I kind of don't want to get hit either, but I really don't want the kids to get hit. But Chief, I do appreciate you guys being out there, I know they had one today, and the person didn't want to argue with them, so they put me down as a witness. I'm more than happy to be a witness when people do that, because somebody's gonna get hit again one of these times.
Yes, we want none of the students hit. Any other items, council? Seeing that, we'll go to the action, county action, question?